Everyone, my name is Susan Lee Son and I'm Travel Council Advisory Board Chair and I like to call this March 14th Travel Council Advisory Board Meeting order. First up is introductions and we are going to do at the end Board Member Reports. So I can say this at the end. My name is Susan Lee Son, I'm the Chair, I'm also Sales Marketing and I write stuff there. We're in the Farland Vice Chair, newly Vice Chair. With high point again.
Melissa Starks, Assistant Marketing Director for Grand Economic Development.
Robert Rivera, the other Marketing Director for Travel Council.
Ega Metzger, Moab to Monmouth Valley Film Commission.
Rebecca Montso, Sales Manager Hampton and Co., Moab.
Lucy Shumway, the Director of Lodging and Noise.
Alex Porcowski, Board Member.
Mary McGann, Commissioner.
I'm August Grant, Economic Development Director. Want to go online?
Adam, do you want to go?
Yeah, of course. Adam Whalen, Data Analytics and Research Director at Love. Do you want to pass it over to Mark maybe? Hot potato?
Good afternoon, everybody. Mark Stephenette with Love Communications, Executive Vice President and Group Account Director. Long titles. We wear a lot of hats here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Hannah Sanders. I'm the Digital Media Director at Love.
Brian, you want to go next?
Well, Brian's here.
Brian, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, having some Wi-Fi issues.
Brian's with the right to slide, Board Member.
I believe that's everyone. Any complex interest disclosures, expedited communication. And any citizens to be heard. Right here. And then so next, we're going to go into any presentations, if there's any, or else after that, just kind of go into the next item on the agenda. And we are going to kind of keep a timer. I will do that because we have a lot to cover. And so we're doing a new system here, putting like a time limit on items. And yeah, so August, you want to take it away? Or should we just kind of turn it up to love?
Well, maybe love should start. I'll give a little high level. Okay, I'll start. So what we've kind of, what I, what I want to go over today is this kind of the beginning of conversations around you know, changes to the 2023 budget as a result of the passage of HB416. I think we're all familiar with what that is, what that means at this point. And they're planning for the top tourism co-op marketing grant. So that, that is an application deadline around the summer. And then beginning to think about the process for coming up with priority list of expenditures for 2024 for TRT and TRCCA. And they're all kind of connected because they're ultimately, what are we trying to accomplish? On with, with our, with our tax dollars here. And so I think we'll turn it over to love to kind of cover up, kind of bring us up to speed where we're at, what spend has been used for, what, what is maybe unfleshed out that they're looking for input and advice on. And then, and then kind of once they're done covering their, their bits, then we can kind of talk about the bigger process and then I might, and then we'll have time for, for Adam to discuss our kind of data management proposal and timeline and get input from y'all on that as well. So I'll turn it over to y'all.
Great. August, do you mind allowing me to share?
Yes, and but no, I don't mind.
Awesome.
Have to go and answer though. You should, you should be able to, Adam.
Awesome. Thank you. So before I do, so what we have presented today is just a high level update of where we're at with our fly campaign. So to take a step back, obviously, we've been utilizing the co-op grant funds from the, the year prior. And if you guys recall, we started two different programs last October focused on our drive markets and our fly markets. We know that you know, consumers are looking at which way is the most affordable way that they can go to destinations that they want to go to. And so really having great messaging and strategies and finding our audiences in both, you know, regional markets where they can drive and also some key flying markets based on the Moab Airport. We really did this two-pronged approach to make sure that we're reaching all audiences where we can really convince them to, to come to Moab. And we always have a layer, you know, when we're talking about, you know, geographics, that's, that's one of the first layers that we look at. The other layers are obviously through data and research that Adam's done is looking at kind of key performance indicators that are then tied up into personas. And so that we're, we don't want to be everything to all people. We've really been very specific on, you know, if someone's looking at, you know, similar destinations or competitive destinations, we want Moab to be in front of them. If they're looking at, you know, Utah as a whole, you know, we obviously want to convince them to come down to Moab. And so with that, I wanted to just give you guys an update on the fly campaign because that has been live since October and it's wrapping up in just two weeks. And as you guys know, our drive campaign has already wrapped up. And so this one was kind of the bigger budget, obviously, when you have, you know, bigger fly markets, you want to make sure that you have enough budget so that you're reaching enough people with the, with the right amount of frequency there so that they remember the message. So I said a lot of things. Here's a visual component of what that fly program looked like across the months. And so we started, obviously, late October, running through March. We obviously know that the beginning of the year, that's really where people start to think about their travel, they're with their friends and families, you know, there's a new work year with a lot of vacations coming up. And so we did see a huge rise in booking intent and hotel searches in the month of January. Well, this is the, basically the backbone of the program. We had pay-per-clicks. So that's anyone on Google searching specific keywords. We wanted to make sure that we were getting in front of them with the right information and having those clicks go to key pages of Discover Moab. We have programmatic, so basically finding people across the website that matches those parameters, right? Of people looking at similar destinations or just fitting our main personas. And then we have connected TV, which has been really, really exciting to, you know, bring forth the beauty of, of your video assets to connected TV devices. And when I say connected TV as a consumer, that's just anything that you're streaming. And so whether that is, you know, ad-supported HBO or Paramount or any of those streaming devices that have ads, everything but Netflix currently, but I have a feeling that Netflix will start having ads soon enough. And we always place on the living room screen. So obviously you know that you can watch HBO on your phone. We really wanted all of these commercials to be on that big TV screen. And then also TripAdvisor, we always want to have a layer of that lower funnel moment where if they are ready to make a purchase that we have that last shot to convince them to look at Moab. And so from kind of the beginning of the campaign up through actually today, we've delivered just shy of 53 million impressions across all of our creative assets across those four channels. Something that we look at when it comes to, you know, retention is we care about direct clicks. Obviously, some people are going to still click pay-per-click, it's in the title, right? But we also look at post impressions. That's when someone doesn't click on an ad, they see it and they still go to Discover Moab or some of our partner websites. And we've seen that that's a stronger correlation to booking intent. And so across the board, we've been able to drive just shy of 42,000 page views for Discover Moab over the last four months. And then if you guys recall too, when we were looking at our display messaging for our fly campaign, we had messaging that was around the flights. And so we wanted to try to update that CTA to be a little bit more direct. And so in January, you know, we got, we sent you guys some options. And so we decided on book your trip today. So that CTA button on the display banners have been a little bit more of a, a direct call to action. And that went into market in February and is running through March. And we did see a little bit of a bump in that CTR. So from 0.07 to 0.12%. Whereas post impressions did, you know, continue to remain the same. So we're always making sure that we put a lot of thought into the creative messages that we want to target to our audiences. But then we also want to continue to test and learn while we're in market. Something that we like to do with any of our reach channels, right? So connected TV, that TV is still a reach channel, but there's so much data behind it that we can still pull out to really measure the success of it beyond just how much of the commercial did they see? And so we were able to connect the dots of someone who saw our, you know, Discover Moab fly commercial on their TV screen. And if they went to discover Moab's website on a mobile device, a laptop, we're able to connect that exposure so that we can see about 94,000 website visits were driven by exposure of a TV ad. And then when we are able to look at people who were exposed to that TV ad to people who weren't, there is a really strong lift of people going to the website. So that's just another component of making sure that we're, we're reaching people and that big brand opportunity, but we're still making sure that's data-driven and understanding the lift that we have for lower funnel actions like going to the website and planning their trip. When it comes to our programmatic partner, they have a lot of real-time travel signals that they're able to optimize on. And so one of the things that we gain from our programmatic partner is understanding return on ad spend within what they're doing. And so currently our return on ad spend with our programmatic partner is about $12 to every dollar spent. In addition to that, we always want to layer on as much data as we can and understanding. And so they were able to add on arrival list or foot traffic study, which means that we were able to again, make sure that we know devices that saw our ad and any of those devices. If they enter Moab, that would be a foot traffic visit. And so just over, just a shy of 900 over the, the course of our off-season from October through February. Now, obviously, what really after, after this slide, so when we talk about post impressions or ad-exposed page views, we don't want to just know, hey, they went to discover Moab. We really want to dive into which pages are either resonating the most based on SEO, which ones are ranking the highest. And so obviously the homepage is going to get a ton of hits, but then you kind of see arches pages that makes sense with, you know, maybe people being aware of the time entry information. Lodging options show that, hey, these people are really looking to decide, you know, if they're coming and where do they want to go. We do have some local businesses that still have our pixel firing. Again, this is a great opportunity to to just make sure that, hey, if there are any local businesses that want to see how this campaign is helping their website, you know, we would love to have those conversations. But something that's obviously very important, right, is heads and beds and what our ROI is. And so with just the fly campaign, we've, we use the Impact Platform. Of course, you guys are familiar with that. It allows us to pixel all of our creative and then tie it back to hotel revenue and, and really important data points that allow us to plan ahead, similar to how we start a campaign, right? We use this as a planning process model so we can understand windows into searches to arrivals, how long people are spending here, how much they're spending. So overall, we've been able to generate just over 13,000 hotel bookings that generates just shy of $7 million. Currently, our ADR is about 207. And right now, the average booking to arrival is just under 60 days. And so again, this has been probably one of the data points that's fluctuated the most over the last couple of years, just with COVID restrictions and, and people, you know, deciding to, to go last minute or to book ahead because there's a, you know, a deal and there's cancellation policy. So I would say that the most kind of volatile data point that we've seen change a lot is that arrival is that booking window. But it's always good for us to keep, keep a pulse on that so that we can understand, you know, when these ad-exposed audiences are coming to Moab. Another helpful tool, part of Impact is saying, okay, where are these people coming from? You guys saw on our program that we're really targeting, you know, key markets for our fly program. So Salt Lake City, Denver, Chicago and LA. There's always a national presence that we have with our campaigns because we really care. You know, if someone's looking at Moab or Utah or if they hit our personnel or a person of interest, right? We, we, we don't care if they're from, you know, Massachusetts. We want them to come here. So you will see some markets that are outside of those main four. Again, on TripAdvisor, if someone's looking, we want to make sure that we're, we're a top of mind. So what we're seeing here is obviously Salt Lake and Denver are your top two markets, but it's really nice to see Chicago and LA come in as well. It's showing that our marketing is really driving those fly markets into coming into Moab during the off-season. And then just lastly, just as a reminder of kind of what that creative looks like, you know, we have four different displays, a different messaging, all of them have performed relatively well. Again, we've swapped out the CTA of flights arriving daily to book your trip today. And we've seen some, a little bit of an improvement when it comes to that CTR. Any questions about that before I talk about time entry?
That was for flying and drive or just fly?
That was just fly.
Which is still active until the end of the month.
Right, and drive wrapped up, yep. And so with that, we are looking at launching our time entry campaign. And so we kind of have this on the same flow chart because we want to look at Moab obviously as a whole, right? And so what I just went over was this flow chart. So again, it launched in 2022 along with the drive campaign, but we're looking at January forward for the year of 2023. This was really the, the fly component that I just discussed. And we had a really, really strong presence here. Again, January, making sure that we're hitting those people that are either planning April trips or summer trips or any of those trips. We really want to make sure that we're always speaking to those audiences in Q1. Now with time entry, obviously with, with the updates and keeping people abreast of, of the information that they need to have when looking at, you know, arches are coming to Moab. We are just starting to launch those efforts here. And August and the team basically said, hey, look at last year and let us know what really, really worked so that we can turn that on again and make sure that we have a presence with the new information. And so our partners for time entry is again, PPC. If people are searching Arches National Park, we want to make sure that we're owning that narrative and getting that education in front of them. TripAdvisor, again, if people are looking at Moab or Utah content, we want to make sure that they understand the implementations of, of what those reservations timeframes are so that they plan ahead so that when they come here, they have the best experience that they can. So I would say the difference between the two campaigns when it comes to goals and messaging, the fly and drive are really prospecting. These are the reasons why you come to Moab, you know, having that, a little bit of that sustainability angle, teaching them about our different pillars, the science, the arts and cultures. So it's really more about drawing people to the destination, whereas the time entry is more about an educational awareness where if you are considering coming here, this is what you need to know about, about coming to Arches. So just wanted to make that, address that difference there. In addition to PPC and our OTA presence, we do have paid social. Again, that's just a very easy reach medium that we can use, really targeting to people that have either been to our website in the past, looking at Arches. We can get very specific with the keywords and content that we're using there. And then something that was new that we've done in the past is utilizing a KSL brand view. And so if you guys are familiar with that, if you go to ksl.com, obviously they have a brand view section that is editorial and also sponsored content. It's a, it's a long-form native piece that allows us to really educate. We, we use it in the past and it's usually been about sustainability or about education. And so this one, you know, Robert really helped, you know, provide the right data and information. And we had KSL write it in their voice to their audience. And we just got that feedback today. And it's a very like positive spin and it's very educational and fun, but it's, it's talking about all the things that you need to know about the time entry. And, and that market is typically the Salt Lake market. Again, anyone that goes there from California can read it. But we really are focusing time entry on a, a national lens because we're being very specific on the behavior and the keywords people are using. And so that is obviously launching, you know, this week and next week, our PPC is already live. And the good thing about how we've allocated this one is that we want to get ahead of that summer rush, which is why we have a lot of presence from March through April. But we know that the implications of time entry goes all the way through October. And so we will continue to have a consistent PPC element of this campaign all the way through September, which I think is really important, which we didn't do last year, that I think is a great opportunity this year. And I will pause there for any questions or comments. So, so to August's point, this, these are kind of the two programs that have been approved and I are either wrapping up or just starting. And so when we talk about, you know, any future opportunities, if we are going after co-op, it's more about, okay, for those funds, what would we like to use those for? What are our brand goals and our opportunities to continue either some of the work targeting our drive and fly markets? Or do we have a different initiative that we could use those funds to support?
I have a question. Can I just show the slides again? So the last, last slide would say that
Sorry, slide, flow chart, Melissa.
The last one, the last one that you showed to us. The, yeah. It's saying, audience for the fly campaign is saying, I guess Denver, LA, Chicago, but in your slides before that is showing Salt Lake City.
Yes, because if you remember, we launched this campaign in October. And so the main markets were Salt Lake, Denver, Chicago, LA. But through this council, we realized that some of the flights for Salt Lake stopped in the winter. And so we moved that market to allocate to the other markets that still had flights coming in.
Okay, yes, I want to clarify that.
No, great question.
Even if we stop that, the numbers is really high to compare with the other markets.
Yeah, I mean, Salt Lake's always going to be your number one market. And again, again, we had about three and a half months of really solid messaging to Salt Lake. So that impact might have not been captured for hook down bookings until like the month after. So it's a little bit of a rolling kind of from ad exposure to bookings. But you're right. I mean, Salt Lake and Denver has always popped up when it comes to all of our data points when we look at kind of market analysis from Google Analytics to Impact to OTAs.
Okay, so this report is from October all the way to March, right?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sharing my screen. Sorry, Adam, are you up or did we want to discuss anything, August?
Yeah, there are other questions on what's, what's already flying? Or flown?
Randy was flying, Jenny.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, okay. So maybe, maybe we turn it over to, to, I guess the one thing I was going to mention is, is so we, you know, before a month ago, we had started talking about the $100,000 that we're kind of thinking about aiming for drive. So that's, that's really the only unallocated paid media budget at this point for 2023, barring any changes. Which we do anticipate. Can you speak to that and kind of where that is in process and any input that you'd want at this point? Or maybe that's, that's staff input time before we do board input on that.
So as of right now, we were holding on to those funds to maybe continue a similar effort just in September or fall, just, just so that we can react to see how, how you guys are feeling. Cause I know that in the past, ten years ago, our main thing was shoulder season. We don't need more travelers in the summer, right? And then obviously with COVID and kind of the fluctuation of people, you know, in 2020, having such a rush in the national parks and then last year it being less and then international travel, you know, maybe we keep those funds. And if we see that May and June, hey, we're not seeing a lot. We can kind of bring that up a little bit into the summer months. But I think we initially were holding on to those funds just so that we could support more of the off-season timeframe. But again, to your point, if we're seeing that, you know, that's that kind of support is needed sooner. I mean, that's why we're here to, to react to those needs. But yeah, those are the
Board, if any questions or thoughts or concerns on that.
I would just suggest that I think summer has always been a bit of a lull, like our, our, our top seasons are spring and fall. And what we're trying to make up for is that little bit of a dip in the summertime. And it's a little bit different between each each different business in town season, like a slightly different view of how tourism rolls through Moab. But in my business, it's very busy in this, in the spring, slows down in the summer and it's very busy again in the fall. Obviously winter is pretty slow. So if we can increase some things, and I know in this particular year with, with there being quite a bit of snow on the mountains, obviously like rivers and that type of thing is going to be really popular this year. And I think you'll see quite a few, quite a lot of visitors coming here to run rivers for the summer because the Moab daily is going to be pretty, pretty welcome. So
Well, I'm wondering if that's like a temporally relevant campaign that we could run, which is like, you know, it's all that snow is going to become water in the river. Come check out Utah's whitewater capital and
Yeah.
And then that obviously everybody comes and like go everywhere else. I think that that seems like a wise kind of micro campaign that we could launch on the senior end, develop some creative, which we have budget for. Any, any other thoughts on that or any alternative views?
I think that's a great idea. I do, I care that a lot of businesses there having issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, I pushed that my last month's newsletter to talk about. It's just because it's the little solves. I had that link going back to the Moab times just dirty pack or dirty or dust pack also.
So it should be good. It should be good water all summer.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, you know, international is still not like coming back to it. It should be, it's still a few years out to bring that back. So like we can target some more regional tourists. I think that would be
And that's just the hook, right? The call to action, actually book your trip on our website. And then whatever you want to do, you can figure out from the website, but that's like the relevant hook.
We might want to check with some of the stakeholders. I talked to some in January, they were fully committed already.
Yeah.
Entertaining high water.
That's a good point.
People were already booked. Stakeholders always.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, I've been thinking about the snow where it's like, oh my gosh, those rivers are going to be.
It's going to be cool.
Yeah. But I like that.
Our summer is typically down anyway.
Especially with the lack of
I think that putting some money towards summer marketing is good.
Yeah.
It might be tough, but you can stay cool.
There you go. I like that.
That's awesome.
Cool. All right. I like that.
Is that, is that timeframe when you say summer? Is that like a July, August or June, like in terms of when you think of that window?
That's a good question.
By August.
Those are, I think, slowest months out of the, out of the year.
You know, the other thing is
They used to be the international
Last year for July and August, every day there was available tickets to Arches.
Yeah.
Every day. I mean, they would come in the mech and we would get them in that day. So you know, that'd be another plug you can say is, you know, the, there, there should be tickets available. So
Less, less, less volume in the park.
Right. Trails to yourself.
Yeah. Said Arches and then do River Trip in the afternoon.
There you go.
Um, I like any other kind of feedback on that, like 100,000 that's currently budgeted from the board.
If we're talking about the summer and people is that evenings in the summer are wonderful. They are just
We do free movies in the park in the summer.
Yeah.
Come and watch.
I, and I really like that idea because it builds up the three creative pillars we had in this past campaign. You know, we have the outdoor rec, which is a slightly different, we're advertising more like water-based. The arts and culture pillar maybe is more like the free concert series on Fridays. Arts in the Parks videos in the evening, you know, off, off hot hours. As, as that, that pillar so that we have kind of offering a little bit.
And we also have our free concert series in July, right?
Yes. Well, and then I think, and then on the other side, you can really focus on dark skies because that's an evening activity.
Yep, love it.
August, also that just, I know we talked about this, but just to jog memories. We talked about like movies in the park and the free concerts series and so forth. Your videographer, what's his name?
Mark Finley.
Yeah, Mark. Cause I remember talking to him last fall and he was, he was, there's some footage that we were hoping that he had.
Great night sky stuff.
Yeah, hadn't captured it yet maybe, but he's maybe that, all these things you're mentioning, he can be out there capturing it for us too.
Yeah, and we'll have to make sure that we actually have collateral to turn into ads, obviously, but.
Yeah. You said he's got a great nights, uh, night sky.
He has good night, he has good night sky stuff.
We've done that before. I think we've had videos with dark skies before. Yeah, that's beautiful, like the time spanned. Yeah.
And if we don't have good river rafting stuff, we can shoot it. We should, but. But that's kind of a good cue into Adam and talking about seasonality and, and kind of our intelligence in terms of what's going on. So we can make these kinds of decisions with even more scalpel-like precision. If there's any other, no other questions that make it like, and Adam. Talk about kind of the data management proposal we've been talking about.
Yeah.
Cool. All right, take it away, Adam.
Cool. Yeah, I've actually, I don't have anything to screen share if that's okay. I'll just talk through it. I know where we're at right now, August, as I've sent you a few emails on the timeline.
Well, we actually have the proposal. I can bring it up.
If you want to throw it up, yeah, I was gonna say I can, cause I'm gonna talk through some of this at a high level. So if you would like to share it, that's, that's totally fine. You're good. While you're doing that, just for the room, I can clarify here. So obviously over the last few months, we've been scoping out and talking about, you know, how to kind of build a, a data intelligence contract, right? I, what I would stress upfront to August's point is this isn't just a dashboard. This is like a seasonally relevant, putting together reports, more of an insight-driven data management proposal, right? So yeah, this is perfect. Thanks, August. Um, so we're basically kicking off this week, even though we've had a few conversations. And what I would note is if you could scroll down just a little bit for me, actually, it's kind of lynched upon three key things. I believe it should be in the deliverable section potentially at the bottom. Yeah, that's it. So what we've basically proposed and put together is a data management solution that again, is not just a dashboard for either the economic development team or commissioners or residents to hop into and pull data at their own will, right? More so what this looks like is a more of a consultative relationship where we're going to be delivering kind of three key things across a variety of data sources, which I'll talk about here in a second. So I think one of the more important things is, you know, we'll probably be meeting or working with August and Ben, probably on a weekly basis. Um, putting together the reports that synthesize all relevant data sources to measuring the economic health and outlook for the county, right? So not just here's how we did in January, but here's kind of what we're seeing trend for the next three months and what we might recommend doing. So going back to it, when we have these conversations about what type of marketing would we want to do in the summer? It's more than just gut instinct and anecdotes, which is very good information. I'm not saying that, right? But we'll have also some tax numbers, we'll have some occupancy related data and some more tangible metrics at our fingertips to kind of guide those decisions. So that first deliverable is that it's a monthly report. There's probably gonna be a few different versions. I'll put together a forty fifty slide report that only I will read and like, cause I'm a data nerd. That will then go to August, who will then say, you know, maybe these ten slides are most relevant for the commission, right? Because you guys don't need a forty fifty slide report, right? And then similarly, how much of that information do we want to publish to the website or relate to residents in the, uh, in the county, right? Uh, that will be accompanied by some dashboard build outs. It's to be determined who will be building that out, whether it's in Love System called Amplify or a partner dashboard company. There's plenty out there. And it's worth noting, we're gonna be going through kind of a vetting process of various data partners over the next month or so. And when I talk timelines, I'll mention what that looks like. But the plan with the dashboards is to have views that would be accessible more in the weeds by the economic development team. Some more simplified data views that anyone could hop into that maybe doesn't want all the information and get a few key numbers around occupancy and spend and visitation. And then something that inevitably could be public facing as well, right? So for residents to hop in, that again is potentially more stripped down because we don't want to overwhelm folks with data, which is always the key part of it. The last component of this, and it's that very last bullet point is industry travel trends reports. So I know this group has seen these in some format. Jonathan usually presents them. But beyond metrics that are specific to grand county at a reporting and dashboard level, we'll want to be providing monthly trend level information about the tourism industry as a whole. So we'll start delivering these, you know, as soon as this month or next month, because they're being aggregated and put together. But that way we're getting kind of two tiers of metrics. It's here's how the county's looking, but also, you know, projecting out, hey, consumer sentiment and travel's dropping. So we'll want to be prepared for that or make some strategic decisions around it. So that's the core of the proposal in terms of timelines. And if you would, August, just scroll back up to the view of all those data sources. Thank you. Um, what our timeline's gonna look like is kind of as follows. So this is obviously part technical, part insight driven. So we're gonna begin with kind of building up the data warehouse from scratch. We're already ingesting a lot of information, like everything Hannah just ran through. But on the screen, you're seeing kind of the main data sources that we've determined are going to be most useful. And over the next, uh, month or so into late March, early April, mid-April, we will be vetting potential partners for some of these data sources. So lodging data is your pretty basic hotel-related stats for the hotels in the area. So that's occupancy percentage, ADRs, supply, demand. STR is kind of the sole partner in that space that a lot of folks use. So it's right now our current recommendation, but we'll meet with them and talk with them and make sure we get what we need. Short-term rental data. So we'll be able to provide in the fashion I just said, across reporting and dashboards, um, information on Airbnbs and other types of properties like that. Um, and there's three or four partners in the industry right now that we're gonna work on setting up calls with to determine who the best fit might be. Spend data, which is currently being used with Visa View, so it just tracks Visa spend. But really, again, they're one of the main players, but some other partners also provide spend data. We'll talk to. Mobile and visitation data. So this is using cell phone IDs or a couple of other different methods. Where are people coming from? What are they doing while they're in the county? How are they moving about? And how can we use that intelligence to better inform strategic decisions, right? So during the summer months, what parks are down, what parks are up, uh, things of that nature are kind of covered under mobile and visitation data. And then also ingesting state and national park visitation numbers, taxation data. And then pretty much trying to get across in the long term, a true visitation number, maybe some ROI tracking for the county. This is very much not something we're building out over a three-month period, handing off to August's team and then going away, right? It's going to be a living, breathing thing, and that's been baked into the contract. So as I mentioned, the technical implementation part of this will take about four to eight weeks. We're starting this week with our kickoffs and getting everything going. Uh, I would say sometime in May, we would have live dashboards and some first versions of these reports that you can expect to start seeing. And then July, August into September is when we'll work on refining those dashboard views, refining the reports. Cause you know, as much as we're the data geeks over here at Love, I mean, you guys know the destination. It always takes some back and forth to get these into a good place for the various stakeholder groups that are concerned with this information. So our hope would be by August, September, we kind of have a really good workflow where there's a monthly performance report. There's a travel trends report and there's live dashboard views for anyone that's concerned with them. Um, and then from there, we would continue to iterate and refine those views. So they're aligning with our strategic objectives, right? Um, again, the last thing I would note, and it's, it's something that we focus on when we do these types of contracts with various destinations, is it's not just a dashboard, a report. It is very much consultative, insight-driven. So we'll be here to answer questions, make recommendations. That's what will be in those reports. Is we'll take our best guess at taking a lot of these almost bland performance numbers sometimes and making them a little more actionable and, and projection-based. So that's where we're at now. I think what we'll do is, you know, we're gonna put together a really concrete timeline sometime this week. And we can share updates, um, as to the progress of this contract as, as we get going. Um, but I don't know, August, is there anything else you would want me to cover, um, more in depth, speak to? I know that was a lot of jargon very quickly over Zoom, which can be not so fun when you're in the room.
Uh, to me, I'm on, I'm up to speed. This all makes sense to me. I'd, I'd wanna make sure that we're number seven, okay? Yeah, Lacy.
So I have a question within the mobile and visitation leader. Um, is that gonna be as specific as like we have this many mountain bikers, this many jeepers, this many hikers, this, like what they're coming here and do that way? Um, mostly I'm wondering for like market research and driving business to the area. That's something that we get at the chamber, a lot of questions about. I'm just wondering if this is data that could help out with that.
Yeah, yeah. Long story short, it definitely can help in that regard. So the fun nuance with mobile data is it will never be able to get you like a one hundred percent accurate number of how many hikers went on a trail. There's a few reasons for that. There's cell service issues. Maybe there's kids with these families and they don't have phones. There's data privacy stuff. What we can be able to show is in a trended fashion, are certain hiking trails up or down in the volume of visitation they're seeing? And what time of year is that occurring, right? Or mountain biking, are we seeing it up and down? So we get to maybe like what's important about that question, which is the intelligence or the insight. But what's a little trickier is a very specific number or a very specific a hundred percent guarantee that, you know, mountain bikers are increasing in this area. It's definitely getting to that point, but it's knowing there's a little bit more gray area, which is why we like to pair it with other data sources and why we don't just rely on that visitation data.
So presentation-wise, it would look more like this many people on a trail rather than there are this many hikers.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly right. Really think about it more as like.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think I'll follow up to that question, which is a really good question, which is what is our, what is the subdivision of the market doing? And a lot of this data is pretty, pretty like big picture aggregate. But I think asking questions of like, how are, is the mountain bike rental industry doing versus the O H D rental industry versus restaurants and all of that? Um, you know, one of the things that we budgeted but haven't built out, um, and, and Adam's kind of provides input on is some more survey type activity. So I, I would see, and I defer to Adam's best recommendations on this, but, um, you know, we've talked about doing like a thrice annual or quarterly like visitation visitor survey. I haven't figured out what that would look like, that you could ask the question, what are you here to do? Um, and try to do that in a statistically significant way. And so that you're saying quarterly, trying to represent, you know, maybe like winter, the main chunks, right? Our quarters. Uh, off-season, high-season, quieter summer, super busy fall. Um, and just trying to ask people what, where they're, you know, that kind of more granular data and make our own data set would probably be how we answer that question. Adam, do you have any insight on, cause that is a question I think everybody wants.
Yeah.
And create our own data set over time.
No, it's super nice. I would say that's a fantastic idea. And I would say it's, it's even amplified more when you pair it with a data set like this. Cause a great example, one subdivision, for lack of a better term, that you just mentioned is restaurants. So one thing we can do with the mobile visitation data is track all of the restaurants as one big cluster. Again, really hard to get that one hundred percent accurate number. But what does help is when you just have surveyed it up or you just have mobile data, both of those data sets have their nuance and issues and tracking and reliability. But when you have both of them, that's when you can be a lot more certain about your forecasts and your insights, right? Because when they're paired together, you get a really good picture of what's going on. So you could get that aggregate visitation of restaurants and then see if the survey-based data matches up with it and use that survey to go a little deeper, right? So I think both provide a ton of value. What's super nice about that visitation data is it is in real time. Every day it's refreshed, right? So you get that quarterly checking, but you could also still with the visitation piece, log in every single day and get a loose heartbeat on how things are looking as well.
Awesome. I had brought this up a while back in relation to this in terms of primarily film industry and its, and its impact here. The difference from your normal civilian going out to recreate of any kind and how that is, you know, taken care of in terms of lodging data and data, spend data as well. Um, or just like groups in general, let's talk about not specific to film, but I am specific to film more. But that, you know, something like that, it is, it's different. It's a different, you know, there's people staying here. Sometimes it's a week, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three months. And those numbers don't seem to get differentiated between, um, in terms of the data that is being accumulated. And that's hard for me to get all the time too, but I definitely try every damn day.
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts on that, Adam? How, how do we capture that kind of like film activity related to comic activity?
As usual, I'm gonna give a diatribe response that I promise will come back to a conclusion at some point. But we basically have two or three different ways we can do it. One really cool way of doing it is making sure we're polygoning is what it's called, or we basically draw a geographic boundary around where that event is occurring, for example. And what we can do is we can cross-reference individuals who go inside that boundary with other areas we basically decided to track. So we could come in and say, of people who went into where the film festival might be, how many nights are they spending in a hotel by looking at both of those kind of travel patterns against one, one another? At a very granular statistical level, we can compare that length of stay or we compare that cross- visitation with the average throughout the year. So we almost get a lift-based metric and saying something like individuals who went into the area where the festival was occurring, stayed on average fifty percent longer than those that didn't, right? So you can do things like that with these sort of data sets to get about that number, which is really nice. And then depending on the mobile visitation partner that we get, they can oftentimes do that for us and provide pretty much these really cool heat maps and these sort of ad hoc studies on an event-by-event basis and compare them against each other too. So there's quite a few ways we could go about it, but stuff like that is a way where you can start to get more concrete numbers than just, we had an event here and we saw X number of people in beds.
And to follow up on that, we did put some budget to try to do that with the couple of events this year.
Yes.
Although we scoped it out again.
Yes, correct. And again, this is where, not to be too vague, this is why we're kicking it off and we're doing our due diligence with the various different data vendors and talking to them. Some of them provide this type of analysis alongside the contract, right? They don't provide additional fees for this event-type-based, um, performance metrics and some do. So we're just gonna do, have to do our due diligence and making sure we're finding the right vendor to answer those types of questions, which can be answered better than they have been with these types of data sets, in my opinion, so.
I'm happy to talk to you about what, what I meant by film production versus film festival, because we don't have a specific film festival event. It's an ongoing theme year-round of film production entities coming to town. So I'm happy to.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
Yeah. Yeah, you're coming location.
Film location with them.
Yeah, cause I mean, if you could provide like us, like just a spreadsheet that says, you know, this area for this period of time and then add that to like the tracking, you know what I mean? That's the only way you could do it.
That information would be really good to see for events, our special events.
I, yeah, and that was the original thought, right?
Yeah.
At least for the ones that we fund with grant money.
Yeah.
It's like, well, we can at least attribute, get some attribution and so.
Yeah.
That makes total sense though from my side. And I guess I could have worded it better, like, long story short, if we can find, if we can understand the geographic parameters by which we're expecting visitation, whether that's an event or whether that's a production crew or whatnot, as long as we have that information, then we should be able to do some type of this analysis, right? The scale of which oscillates depending on how big that production might be, how big a festival might be, how big whatever it might be, right? But if we are able to do that, then we can do that cross-referencing against hotels, short-term rentals, some stuff like that, so.
Yeah. And so I think the, the follow-up to the following conversation we're done here is thinking that like, if that's really valuable and we want high level granularity, probably need to increase the amount of money going towards these activities, right? Because I think what we had scoped out is not gonna be able to give us, um, or what's budgeted is not gonna give us the entire, as you know, whatever eighty percent of the best of the film, you know, activities or of the special events we have going on. And I think that we all want to get a better understanding of what's going on.
Can I ask too, then within the budget, is this, is there a specific amount for like setup that then that portion would, um, drop off in years to come using this data over and over?
Yeah, correct. There's, there's a small setup fee for what it's worth. I would note that the bulk of the contract is, um, on our end, there's a lot of just our hours that go into a monthly management of the data sources. And what we've basically done is just averaged that out over twelve months. So we track our work on an hourly basis and what we anticipate is in the first few months, we'll be way over hours because we're doing that initial setup, right? And then, yes, you are correct. A good example would be next year, once we've had a full year under our belt, we could easily probably come in our little hourly rate that we're coming in at, not rate, but hours we're using. Cause we've built a lot of that foundation, right? But in the current contract, you will see it as just an equal amount, because we've basically just divided into the twelve, knowing we'll be over hours to begin with and then it'll come down. But that's pretty much what we'll plan on doing is in the back half of the contract, when we're at a more just management basis with these data sources, looking at those numbers for what a renewal might look like long-term, but.
Um, Adam, I have a question. So for this recording, I don't know if you've gotten this far, but like, are you guys going to report on it? Are you guys gonna report on it like, uh, the commission? Like, uh, in, is it gonna be in the form of like slideshows? Um, kind of like what you just did for us?
Yeah, honestly, whatever y'all are good with. Like, we are more than happy to, to report. We do like to do slideshows or slide decks, because it's just easier to put together data-friendly visuals for folks that are not maybe in the weeds as much as we are, right? It's a lot easier to tell a story and provide insights than a dashboard view. We're happy to present that. We're happy to be in attendance while someone from the economic development team presents it, so we can answer questions. Long story short, we're flexible to whatever, uh, y'all want.
Yeah, mine, you go first.
Oh, I'm just thinking it'd be really nice to show like a screenshot or something quick or like an email campaign or a blast after you guys do this to, you know, keep them sign up for it, you know, just like what Melissa sent out to, for about the, um, transit coming up. So I just think being able for people to sign up for this information for, to send that. So I just think being able for people to sign up this information for, to send that email, if it's a newsletter every month, we do it, you know, or a blast. Um, I think it's really great to be able to share that with everyone that wants to be connected with in the community.
I think my, my initial thought is that it's presented kind of with the support of Adam and team at this meeting and commission meetings. Um, and then we'll distribute, you know, a hard copy, and by that I mean like, uh, uh, something that you, anybody can look at it there anytime through like an email to our list. Um, and then, you know, working with our news partners, um, at, at, you know, the paper and radio and whatnot, to say like, here's this information, you know, report this however you want. And I think it would be cool to, you know, I, I've been thinking about ways that we can get that more publicly available outside of like, it's a tracker list. And that's, that's a conversation I want to talk to you, Maggie, about, um, and K and you, and anybody else, Casey, Ryan, whatever.
And in the past, they've had, a few years ago, they had like a quarterly report, economic quarterly report, and it was just on the website, maybe accessed at any time.
Right. So, yeah, and then we archive it, right?
Yep.
I think that's some, that's something we've identified as a weak point right now is like the county website presence. We've been spending a lot of time trying to make sure stakeholders are in the know, but you look at our website stuff and it's very dated, right? And so making sure that the, all of these things, monthly reports, campaign reports are accessible in any way. And I think that's definitely priorities in general, more transparency, follow-up for the average risk to find stuff, find the real information.
Excuse me?
Yeah. So is there any other, there, like I, I said, email, working with our newspapers and other outlets, um, in these meetings on our website, is there any other forums that you think people would want to receive this information or, um, on?
I think if we put in that website is the best one, because then we can link and send and change email class. Everybody just, just click on this thing. And if you want to download, I think the only thing, the best way that we can have this information will be PDF. So everybody, they want like a print copy, they can, just download, just, yeah. Something gets easy for the public, nothing complicated.
Yeah, the Facebook page, be great.
Right. And then you, and you post and say, hey, it's on our website or whatever.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but I think we were trying to figure this out, but I think the goal is also to have that, you know, public facing data data repository. So if people are trying to say like, okay, I see, um, this monthly report, but I want to download all available lodging data that you guys have. Uh, and put that somewhere that people can do their own analyses. Uh, or if there's someone who's wanting to build a hotel in Moab and they want this information, because we get this request, you get requests all the time. Having that one place that their analysts can do whatever they want to do, get information.
Yeah, that's correct. And then where, part of the reason we have this like six-month timeline, even though a lot of the technical stuff is done three months in, is we can talk through what's the best way to roll that out, right? Like, how granular do we want to get in providing information, both in the reports and both from a downloadable perspective? That's the type of stuff where what we've baked into this proposal too, is knowing that a report for certain stakeholder groups could be different than one for another, right? Cause for as good as a report could be for this group, the amount of depth we go to, maybe what you share on social is even stripped back a little further, right? So part of that is included both in the reports, but yes, to your point, August, what we have is, uh, just basically an archive online that you could access or download. All that's up in the air for how much, uh, depth we want to provide, folks.
Commonly get a question, what's the best time of year to come to Moab? And the response is what do you want to do? And we, people can look at a spreadsheet of that, depending on their activity that might be helped.
Yeah. I think another thing too is if we create a good data repository, then we can, you know, like when I was an economic student, we had to do a master's thesis. And the hardest thing to find is, is, is data. Um, and so, you know, we're working with, um, you know, student programs. So here's this big pile of data, we're not going to be able to do all of the multi-variable regressions. Um, but maybe you want to figure out, you know, the impact of weather on, you know, market spend, for example, and isolating all the other data sets. Um, which would be cool for us to do too, but, um, and I would love to do that, but, um, you know, it is a lot by just creating the good data sets that other people can get good insight on, so.
Yeah, but to your point too, businesses are only open in certain kinds of year or two, many of them. You know, that's the idea of when, when the voting, when the voting starts and when the voting stops. And sometimes that is like ski mountains, right? When the river is still high, they're going to still flow. But sometimes it's not, or restaurants stay open, sometimes some of them close and other business, I mean, it's really totally like. It's a mind game puzzle of how to, yeah, who, I mean, I'm on my Google, no, well, actually they're not open Wednesday and Thursday. But you can get to them, you know, you know, it's like all stuff.
Yeah, putting it all in one place, like you said.
Putting it in one place, it's really important.
Right. Any other questions on this data stuff? We're going to start cooking on it tomorrow. Got a meeting, um, staff meeting with love tomorrow to forward. Okay.
Do we want to go over?
Yeah.
Things kind of jumped.
Yeah, we kind of.
Yeah, yeah. Um. The co-op marketing grant?
Yeah. So maybe let's go back and talk forward-looking strategy on. I think Adam, I don't think we need your time anymore, unless anybody has more Adam questions, but I, I might ask for Hannah and Markin uh, to stick around for this part. Thanks so much, Adam.
Excellent. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We'll save your hours for some other client. Um. So I think I'll, I'll probably start on the 2023 piece. So obviously, um, we want to start looking forward to changes to the 2023 budget, I think is the place to start. Um, and, um, so I, I attached kind of our, our budget, um, that was passed for this year for specifically the, the tourism promotion category. Um, and contextually, I just wanted to start the conversation around, um, I'm going to zoom out of this. Um. Basically the fact that, um, we're going to have to do a budget amendment or, or some kind of a change halfway, um, basically, um, we'll be able to pick, collect TRT revenues towards economic diversification until, um, July, until the end of June. And then any money collected at that point will be able to go towards economic diversification. So we'll have to figure, we have to do some internal financial analysis to figure out how much in reserves for each allowable use, how much are we going to have forecasted for each allowable use? Um, but, but functionally, we're anticipating about half a million dollars increase in terms of actual revenue towards tourism promotion and a half a million dollars decrease towards economic diversification for 2023. Um, it's worth noting that about $300,000 out of this 1.8 million is pulling from reserves. Um, and so, you know, one way to cut it would be that, that we keep this, we add another $200,000 and we leave the reserves alone. And we're just operating with our annual revenue, um, collections for this year. Um, I'm bringing this up because obviously this, this board is, should be involved in that process. Um, but internally, we still need to figure out exactly kind of what the roadmap looks like and what our priorities are and what we figure, what we'd like to have more funding or less funding. But I just wanted to start the conversation today, I think. I don't think we need to dive super deep like line item by line item in terms of we want more here and more there, because we don't entirely know what that's going to look like internally. But, um, flagging that that's like priority number one. Um, and then priority number two being planning for the marketing, um, co-op grants, which will supplement. Could supplement this year's budget, because it'll, it'll come in, um, if we win it around the end of the year. So it could go towards this year, but it's easier to apply it to next year's budget for 2024. Um, and so I guess maybe I want to start, given all the conversation that we've had and given all the context that we've had, like, um, maybe just like a couple of minutes of discussion around additional funds in this category and any of these items that people would like to see receive more funding or any projects, um, that, you know, we have more money. Where would we like that to go? Um, what would, what would board members of the travel department like that to go towards? So I kind of just want to open that up first. Um, and then Mark and Hannah has resources to, you know, if it's marketing related, they can help us think about, you know, how does that fit into what we're already planning? Um, additional projects or all of these other, other things we've got going on that are maybe not marketing heavy. Um, we just had a long conversation about data and so, you know, maybe it's, it's more research dollars. Um, I think that, uh, you know, supporting some of our, um, uh, responsible recreation education stuff, um, as we've been talking about this, like, you know, before you Moab, Moab Stewart, whatever you want to call it. Um, this is how you Moab, um, type of modules, we have some funding for that this year, but we could get moving on that quicker. Um, and then obviously like more marketing dollars, I think is, is always on the table. Um, is there anything that people want to just like throw out and place hold? Yeah.
Um, I kind of like the idea of maybe putting the reserves back or as much of the reserves we can put back. What is it that by law we're allowed to have in reserves? Is there a?
Yeah. So it's 50% of the annual revenues. So we get about $8 million, $1 million.
With the unknowns, with, um, the economy, gas prices and all of that, um. I s, I would be conservative. I would like, yeah. I suggest being conservative, putting that money back into reserves as much as we can, you know? Obviously, if we need to use some reserve, that way we still have some available for marketing if the TRT drops down.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's a good point. We don't, we don't have to change the budget. Anything we don't spend would go to reserve. So if there's additional allocation of funding um, to this category and feel good with the budget as it stands, that additional funding would, would go into the reserves, um, for the future to be spent in any future time for, um, this progress, these services.
And you scroll down to the advertising.
Yep. So that's right here, paid media. And then for clarification, the spreadsheet has subcategories, because that's how the budget software works. And anything in bold is a summary or a sum of like all of the, all of the subcategories for that. So this 504 is, is a sum of all of these ones. I didn't make that super clear, but.
Um, I would like to kind of defer to the other departments, um, at the travel council. Is there something that you did not, do not have like on your budget for the year that was kind of missed, or you would like to flag either for this year or going forward or?
I think we can inject that money for the fly and drive campaign. As, as a board say for summertime, maybe you have a little bit more money for that. Hmm. Actually talk about, talking about inflation and other things, my, um, trade shows or international trips. The cost is going up for the flights and hotels and everything. So my body is, is tired right now. So I actually, I used pen, I pass my budget because of the inflation. I tried to book in January for everything to the rest of the years and it, yeah, it's tight. So I, I actually talked with all of them and I said, my budget, I'm going to pass my budget for, you know, the shows and international.
So I think, I think we will, um, we'll, we'll have this basically the same conversation internally and we'll figure out this kind of stuff and, you know, figure out.
And also tours is another thing, like hotels, uh, I asking to request for hotels. I don't want a free hotel, but I wonder if hotels make money. But my family, Melissa, this is so expensive, I cannot afford to pay a $150 hotel. So I want to support that the economy here in town, but also the family, they don't have the money for that. So if I can increase my hundreds, that would be a great idea.
Yeah. So that's, that's here. So that's earned media, trying to get folks who are visiting on either an influencer trip or media supporting their.
Do we know, do we know like ROI, how like are the families bringing people?
Yes, we're working with the state. So let's say you send enough fan tours, then they actually, uh, next month, Vicky Varela is coming with a fan tour to check what's going anymore, because they don't want to come tomorrow. They prefer to stay in Green River. Uh, here now in more the whole day, but they don't want to stay here because it's really expensive.
Oh, for the government rates.
In Green River, they have new hotels.
They do. They have five total hotels there now, I think.
That's kind of embarrassing.
Well, it's, it's, it's not because of preference, because they're government rate, it's like a hundred bucks a night.
Yeah.
They can't afford to stay here. So unless a partner is like, please stay here.
That's right.
That would be. So if you guys don't support me that, that would be fantastic. So I'd support the state too.
Would be nice. So would you prioritize fan tours and then, uh, tours at, at those conferences or which would you prioritize?
I think both, I think, yes.
It's pretty small.
I would last just $2,000 for, for shows and.
Not a lot.
$3,000 more for hundreds, because at the beginning for hundreds, it was $14,000. That's what the state told me to my budget. And I have in my budget is $4,000.
All right.
So at least if I have like seven, that would be great.
So I mean, I guess my two cents is, um, you know, the more that we can put towards promotion. I know in the beginning we asked for a hundred thousand more to start with.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we didn't get that, but anything that we can put that way, and you know, um, maybe that promotion looks like fan tours and, and conferences. And maybe it looks like, um, you know, a bigger love contract. I also agree with, um, putting some more money into the research, because to me, all of our questions always come down to, we don't know.
Right. Maybe we can know.
And I want to know.
Yeah.
If I can dovetail on that, I'm not sure if love has a department that does this kind of things. I was just talking about this a little bit previously. Um, I think that I feel highly motivated to guide visitors and the visitor experience once they arrive in Moab and make that pleasant for the community as well as the visitor. And it seems like if we had some really hip fun signage that said this wave for that and that wave for that and your tourist of dollars paid for this bike path in 1922 or, you know, whatever, cool hip history things that not only elevate the visitor experience, but make the community feel like visitors aren't in their neighborhoods, they're in the corridors where visitors belong, not where we live. Yeah, I think that's educational too.
Yeah, totally. In market.
And I don't know if love does that, but, but it's the same thing. It's once they get here, it's got to be a great experience and this is where you go.
Yeah. I mean, that's absolutely something we can support. And then also looking at like, you know, kind of the way finding QR codes, where they can look up information and landmark too, right?
Mm-hmm.
So there's a whole opportunity there as well.
I spoke to Mark at the summit a bit about this too, in relation to film tourism and the history of film in this area. And how that is actually an income bringing a different type of person. And the QR code situation and the fact that next year happens to be the 75th anniversary of this film commission that exists here. Um, and I, and, and the conversations with, you know, I'd like to talk to some people in town. There was a downtown plan at one point, and I had mentioned like putting up in cool plaques of all the films made in the area. I feel like it might be a great opportunity to do something like that within that, putting on a QR code that people can go to these cool places that the films have been made and come for a different reason, and they can come any time of year for that. And that's also been mentioned. It's not a seasonal specific thing, like if you want to go, I mean, getting to now called film in Louis Point is slightly seasonal, but, um, but there are many others. You know, but that's, I think, unrelated to, I mean, that's right, it's toured every time before them.
Yeah, because we could do that, right?
I'm going to do these things, these conferences. I'm supposed to be in Austin right now. I could not go because of the budget. I, you know, there was a chance to do that, and then I had to choose something else over that. And that's because of the cost of flights and hotels. When you're going to other areas, do that. And that is to bring other filmmakers to come here and or people, you know, to.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, you were saying?
Oh, no, Becca, I was just saying that, um, because we could work out a whole sort of platform like that. There are platforms that exist, we use them for like the Solid City Airport, for example, where they've got our installations all over the airport and where you can just, you know, travelers can just scan a code and, and it'll pop up and give information about that particular art piece, the artist and so forth. And likewise, looking at something like that in Moab where it gives, uh, you know, tourists an opportunity to learn more and, uh, and direct them to certain content. So. So that's, you should kind of have in mind, right?
Or maybe Alex.
Yeah.
But all right, we'll come back here.
My, my's kind of like earrings.
Yeah.
There.
Oh, well, yeah, yes.
No, I'm.
Okay. No, my question is talking about, um, wayfinding and all of that, we got, I know we're not going to discuss the billboards or whatnot, but my question is, is that like messaging, are, are you asking for opinions about the messaging or just the, like, I, I have that?
I'm more than consulting that.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's at a point where it's still draft, so anything can be changed. Yeah, it's it's at a point where it's still draft, so it can be changed. Um, we we just want to make sure that. We have full transparency and and buy in or, you know, who knows if we'll get full buy in. Process there, but at least input.
Yeah. And this is the billboard.
So this would be changes for both North and South Maverick billboards. Uh, and mainly we just want feedback. So that we can compile that feedback in one place before. Now we go, oh, here's another change, here's another change, here's another change. But.
So like where are the additional billboards? Do you have?
About this right here?
Yeah.
So this has, I mean, this is basically, we've talked to love about this.
In town or.
It's not differentiated. So it part of the ask was if there's additional in town billboards that are available. Then we could put more of this kind of like. Visitor guiding information, then that's kind of gives us freedom to go ahead and grab those. Uh, if that comes up, we can also spend those on other billboards that are kind of along key drive routes. So you know, we have. One in Frida, we've got two um, on each direction coming into Mob on Seventy on the exit. But you know, we could add one like on the Salt Lake route, like in Price area or one that you're coming up like Albuquerque or something like that.
How about something like, just throwing it out there, but something more like an educational billboard that's on your way up sand flats.
Yeah, well, I guess we have to install that somehow.
Well, yeah.
That's a really good point. No, I think that's totally a possibility.
Bureau on the side of the recycling center. See it on your way up, right?
Yeah. But I just know how many like people go up sand flats and there's like a, everybody's driving up and checking stuff out. If you had like a giant billboard, it's like. Some educations, some just. Um. I I think more educated uh. Uh, format there.
Totally. Yes.
Okay. This is way off, but can you go down to where it shows? I think you have something in there with the mic.
Um, it is. Well, the Mick numbers need to come up because they're below what we've contracted with you.
So yeah, I did, but there's another, there's one line item that I want to talk about. No. The technology upgrade. You have five thousand dollars in there and that was supposed to be for. Some.
And still is.
What I'm thinking. People have them in their hands already.
Yeah.
Because those were supposed to be for like iPads. They had there to help people navigate the. The um, O H D name. Could we change that five thousand and put that over to? Like the fam tours or? Would I love an extra, because it's not really an extra five thousand instead of make, it's five thousand for iPads. Which I really don't think we need.
Fair enough.
Um, we already have all QR codes made. We handed people silver paper with QR codes and they navigate it on their phones. The issue we're having right now is there are still somehow, some way people are getting into the state website where it says you can come pick them up. And let them know and let them know. And they said, no, we fixed it. It's not there. Well, yeah, you can still get there. So somehow, some way people find a way to. And they go, no, it says you can pick them up with the Mac. So I. But we're, we're dealing with it, so.
And my members will listen say a thousand times on the phone.
Yes.
People recall about it.
Yeah.
If you can't.
Yeah, but so I mean, it's, we're just.
Yeah, definitely.
I don't want to waste five thousand dollars on iPads that we don't need.
Yeah.
Or they they might be used for one season and that's it.
Cool. I think that um, for for, I think, discussions of like that kind of granularity, I think the best thing that I could get is like an email. That says, here's. Here's my thoughts and then we can collate them in one place. And I actually, if they, if they brought anything up here, please send that in an email.
You want, so you want me to email you that?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and I, and you know, we could talk about this. All day, but ultimately the next step is going to be. We have to circle the wagons internally and kind of do a first pass of this. Um, and kind of similarly to have the budget process version, then we put that to you all and then kind of refine and, um, but I want to make sure that if there's any like. Things that kind of are not even on here or like are definitely a priority that's made clear to us so that we can um.
I like what Lori suggested, the educational piece of being like, this is funded by, like, I think we talked about that. Yeah, so I really like that aspect of it. I would like to see that added somewhere um, like that. Um, and kind of going off of what Lisa said to ask for the hundred.
Yeah.
To do that, so um, I would like those two.
Cool.
Skip and ask for more. And then also for Melissa and. Like their budgets to be, that's, those are my three suggestions.
And I, and I like your point of, uh, if we can, if we can not pull from reserves, probably a wise move. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if this is set in my absence, but I just want to make sure we were on track to yield more than eighty-four twenty-five.
We got four, two minutes and forty seconds left before a five minute warning.
Great. Okay, so let's, let's quickly move on into these other pieces. Um, so call marketing grant basically. Is that's almost more about the twenty twenty-four budget because. That is where amongst this amount of money. So let's imagine that this has another two hundred thousand in it. And that's basically what we're going to anticipate for next year, maybe a little plus or minus. Um, and. If I'm getting that right. And so for example, this year we supplemented this budget with an additional, you know, basically quarter million dollars toward fly market campaign. Um, the, the rubric of that marketing is relatively. It's become more generous. It was very specifically like out of state marketing oriented in the past. Um, they also have like forever mighty category that's really focused on that sustainability lens, responsible education lens. Um, it's funded can have be kind to can have campaign. I think it could fund something like what you're speaking about. Um, and that kind of like visitor kind of education almost guidance kind of a campaign. So it's really, it's it's very much open. I think it is, I think the, the best chance we have of maximizing those dollars is still like media oriented. Um. But I think coming, if we come up with a strong narrative and a strong project that that helps supplement. It's fifty fifty match, so we still have to, you know, put up our own quarter related towards it, but. Um, you know, it's an opportunity to supplement the budget in a specific way. And but it does require. You know, love and art department to put it together, pretty high application that takes some time and then presenting that in person. So. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess any like first thoughts about maybe thinking about things that could go after with that and. Um, because that has to happen before we really get into the twenty twenty-four process.
Well, just to kind of explain that or a little bit more detail to Rebecca and Lori, like to get that marketing grant, like. The week, they match it, like the state matches it. So like, that's why it does seem like a lot, but. Like we spent two hundred fifty thousand and then we get them to fifty thousand. So we have five hundred thousand dollars to spend on a certain campaign, just huge. So like. That money goes so far. So I think that's, it just sounds a lot of money.
Um, when we get the match, that has to be used for like an esoteric title thing or.
Um, basically that there's program guidelines on, and maybe that would be the subject of like our next month's meeting. Is more in depth and and send out. They haven't actually sent the program guidelines out for this year because the person who manages it will turn it away. Um, and so she'll be hitting the ground running in April, but I think maybe just think about everything we've talked about and like. What would be good to inject some additional dollars towards? And and I think it's a good way to like. Sell a bigger project. Um, that maybe is not in our traditional funding sources. Yeah.
I guess I would like to know if love has any um. Strategic information from like what the state is doing and if there's anything you can give back off because you always get more bang for your buck that way. So.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and that's what we do kind of every year too, is kind of knowing what their approach is so that we can piggyback either from a strategic standpoint. Or or an alignment. Um, and that's where I think a lot, at least for the last two years. Just showcasing that forever mighty message or educational message or dispersing visitation, whether seasonally or on off. Half, you know, activities has really um. Been a theme. It doesn't mean that we have to continue that theme, but I think that the, the most success that we've seen is just really, really doing it with a data driven lens. Where we are showing, hey, these are the, these are the people that we're reaching and this is why, and this is how we're going to measure that ROI or whatever that goal is. Um, and so to August's point, just being very specific. And if you guys have an idea of, hey, we want to. Uh, focus on fall because of X, we would make sure that we would plan out that accordingly. But I, I do from like a, a seasonality standpoint of what they're focusing on. They will continue to do. That winter in Southern Utah fall push, uh, because they've definitely over the last four or five years. Um, wanted to make Southern Utah a little bit more of a year round experience. For those who are willing to experience it. So there's been definitely an educational lens of if you are going down Southern Utah, this is all you need to know about. Um, and obviously right now they are, we are launching their, their big Southern Utah push, which is always February through May. Um, and so those kind of pillars of their messaging and that timeframe will, will continue. Um, but when it comes to kind of what that secret sauce is for like the full applications, I think it's just, you know, an authentic lens of what you're trying to do. The, the data that you put behind it and how you're going to measure it.
Okay. Only thing I would say is just hearing about the film commission, it's a pretty big number, pretty big exciting thing that we should. I don't know, I would like to support.
Oh, the next year's um. Anniversary.
Yeah, like when to get ahead of on that to support it and to advertise for it. And um, I think that would be a really great, unique opportunity that no one else could do.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the conversations have started because it is also the Utah Film Commission's fiftieth anniversary. As well as the hundredth anniversary of film general of golden holdings. So it all began in holdings. Then it moved up here, then it moved over to Salt Lake area. And so it's a very, twenty twenty-four is a massive year. So conversations are being had between. The state office and myself, um, and then the potential of the. Of things happening in the area and how to go about doing that. So yeah, it's all, it's all in the works.
Like a marketing budget in your budget?
Uh, if I do, it's probably that.
That would be totally on us.
So maybe not communication can help us and create a little campaign. It's just a specific for. For being.
Like a film tourism.
Yeah.
Well, film tourism slash, I mean, I would like to hold an event of some kind and that is something that I'm working through. The same way I did the Moab showdown, forty-nine hour short film. Turnaround competition for the seventieth anniversary, which was a huge success and Star Hall packed with five days of like awesomeness and kids making movies. And, you know, it was like fantastic. There's something that needs to happen. Um, for next year, just what exactly that is is.
Could you manage to um, have a premiere that celebrates that?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Just have some movie, who knows, whatever.
That we could show here for.
By twenty twenty-four, I mean, let's see what. Number one should be done, but 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 yeah, it's hard to say how they're going to distribute that.
We have a moment.
But no, all of those things are ideas and there are other, other projects in the works. It's just about, yeah, me. Putting my, having more, more time. And less projects in town to actually figure out what to do. And then, and time is fleeting, you know, basically the anniversary is, it's like, you know, it's already Christmas now. And so then next year. So, yeah, I mean, I love, yeah, I want to do something really, really cool and have it be really fun and have it. Include with the entire state, which is what the state wants to do too. So we're working on what that means, but money does. Change.
Cool. So it's only to think about the twenty twenty-four budget. The last thought I want to plug is that this fall is the, is a, an eclipse. And so there's been a lot of, and it's mostly like, like the Canyon National Park area is going to be like totally encompassed if I'm not mistaken. So there's been some movement towards like. Coordinated something or other. Um, so that's I think the only other thing I'd want to flag for like, if we have additional something for something, I don't know what that would look like.
Really cool in gold glasses.
Yeah, just something to support the fact that people are right already coming for that. It is our busy season, so I don't know, marketing, but like an event or something else. But to grab them and say like, hey, we're, make my place to be up here.
I think that's amazing.
Um, but I think we should turn.
Dark skies.
Yeah, it's in the morning on Saturday, October fourteen. Um, okay, next, uh, thank you, love.
But thanks, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy, Amy. Nice to meet you. Um, National Park Service report on Arches, uh, twenty twenty-three time entry.
Hi, Kate.
Hello, can you guys see me?
Yeah, where are you at?
I am at Colorado National Monument. So it's good to see everyone's faces.
Hi, Amy.
Uh, yeah, I've been detailing over here as the acting chief of interpretation and education over the winter and it has been a wonderful experience. I definitely miss Moab though. Um, so I'm a little homesick seeing all of you in one place. Well, um, yeah, well, I'll go ahead and get us rolling. So I'll introduce myself again. My name is Kate Thomas. Um, I'm the public affairs specialist for the Southeast Utah group. And then with me today is Amy Tendek and she is our brilliant park planner. Who has loads of data to share with you today. And um, in our presentation, we're just going to take a look. At what we discovered through data collection during last year's time to entry program. And we'll talk a little bit about what we learned about vehicle entries, visitor experiences. And then we'll uh, also look at some lessons learned and changes that we're going to implement for twenty twenty-three. That we hope will improve the system. And after that, we will answer any questions that you might have. So without further ado, take it away, Amy.
All right, thanks, Kate. Um, as Kate said, I'm Amy Tendak. I'm the park planner here for the Southeast Utah group. I don't know how many of you have heard any of our previous presentations. We've done a couple. Both introducing the timed entry system last year and then summarizing some of what we um, learned from timed entry uh, last fall. Um, so we have a very abbreviated version of that to share with you today, um, some of the key. Uh, key findings from uh, the timed entry pilot last year. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen here with the PowerPoint. All right, can everyone see that?
Not yet. Okay.
Now you can, okay. One more button to click. Okay. So I am going to start. Playing it. All right, here we go. Um. So the goals for the twenty twenty-two timed entry pilot um, were to distribute visitation throughout the day. Um, to provide reliable access at our entrance and at the trailheads in Arches. And to improve visitor experiences in the park. Um, so I'm going to try to touch on all three of these points. Um, and Kate's going to help uh, with some of these at the latter part of the presentation. So to get into how effective we were in distributing visitation across the day, um, I wanted to share a couple of graphs with all of you. Um, this first one I think is really telling on, on top here. Um, in how uh, visitation shifted uh, throughout a single day. Um, and so this is comparing um, the same date uh, in twenty eighteen is in orange and in twenty twenty-two is in blue. April twenty-third, we're looking at here. Um, and this, this date was uh, chosen going way back to twenty eighteen. Because we wanted to find a day with the, about the same total vehicle arrivals to the park. And and these two matched up really well. So you can see here that um, comparing twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, we shifted a lot of visitation. To earlier parts of the day, especially um, before ten AM. Um, increased those earlier arrivals and really kind of flattened um, that curve of visitation that we had seen previously. Um, and then in this lower slide here, this is um. Uh, a graph that we're including in our monitoring report, which will be coming out soon, more on that later. Um, but this is showing the uh, twenty nineteen, which is our comparison year. Um, for the timed entry pilot is in gray, the lighter shade here and then twenty twenty-two is in black. So you can see the average lines are solid and the max lines are dotted. Um, so the, the, this is an average throughout the season and you can see that we really effectively smoothed visitation across the day. Sort of lessened that, that hump that you see there in twenty nineteen and especially with the max lines. Um, we really um, decreased those uh, instances of extreme crowding in the park. Um, we had some changes and shifts where we had more uh, crowding a little bit earlier in the day outside of the timed entry window. Here you can see a little spike at between five and six and then a little larger increase after timed entry ended at five PM. And then to talk um, more broadly about visitation in general, we just released our twenty twenty-two. Uh, visitation data for Arches and as. Uh visitation data for Arches. And as many of you probably know, our visitation was uh lower in twenty twenty two than in twenty twenty one. In fact, we saw a nineteen percent decrease from twenty twenty one. Um this is showing our visitation in Arches going back to two thousand fifteen, and twenty twenty two is this green line here. And so uh we we saw quite quite a drop across the spring and summer months. But again, we were lower than many previous years um across the entire year. Um so this is just to kind of show how how it compared with previous years, and it. Um total visitation numbers for Arches were more similar to what we saw in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And this is um just to put that in context, because I know there's a lot of uh questions about why visitation was reduced. Um in Arches and and maybe in the area generally. Um but this is a a graph showing our percent visitation change from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. You can see that we started last year um in the red, so the entire year and and into this year now. Um our visitation has been reduced from the previous year uh anywhere from uh twenty seven, twenty eight percent. Um to closer to four percent reduction. Um but this, I thought this was a little bit telling, just to show that there's been. Uh a general decline uh in Arches over the past year and a half. And um you know, a little bit more market here in the late spring, early summer, our busiest months. But uh continuing to see that decline even outside of timed entry from October um to February of this year. And then uh to look at that in the in the larger scale across the intermountain region. Um this is also from our monitoring report. And like I said, because twenty nineteen was our comparison year for a lot of that. That work, we took uh twenty nineteen visitation at all intermountain region parks with the exception of Yellowstone, because they had that. Exceptional year this past year with with closing the park for an extended period of time. But these are the remaining parks in our intermountain region. Um and you can see that many parks in our region saw declining visitation in twenty twenty two. When compared to twenty nineteen, Arches is right here at twelve percent. Um but Grand Teton is here at eighteen percent. They did not have a timed entry pilot there or at many of these other parks. Um Rocky and Glacier both did have a uh some form of ticketed entry or timed entry that they were piloting in twenty twenty two. And then another uh data point to consider is is our ticket sales last year. Um this is showing how many timed entry tickets we sold across the entire season. And you can see that for most of the spring and early summer, we were selling out ninety five to a hundred percent of tickets that we were offering every day. And then a really uh market decline after the Fourth of July here. And uh into August, when things got really hot, um there were uh many days where we only sold fifty to sixty percent of available tickets. Um so again, this just sort of illustrates that maybe the demand wasn't there, even if the even if the supply was available. You can see this huge spike that happened on Labor Day weekend, a little decline, and then we um. We got back up into that ninety five to a hundred percent ticket sales for the remainder of September. So to summarize um how timed entry may have influenced uh the visitation at Arches, I don't know that we. Uh can put a number on it. We definitely do not have a number at this point to say. How it contributed and if it and if it did, to what extent. Um but we know that over the course of the pilot, our monthly visitation at Arches decreased fourteen to twenty seven percent from twenty twenty one. Uh we also know that statewide travel decreased by around seventeen percent. Um we know that many other National Park Service sites across the intermountain west saw decreased visitation. And that road and air travel nationwide also decreased. Um and at the same time, we wanted to uh elaborate that we provided the same opportunity for access as a typically busy day in twenty nineteen. Um and that summer tickets did not always sell out. And that uh visitation shifts that we saw on a daily basis, as I showed in that previous graph. Did did not indicate major displacement happening. We didn't have um huge influxes of visitors coming in pre six AM and five PM. We did see slight increases there, but not to the level that would show that there was major displacement um due to more demand than supply. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Kate uh to get into a couple other points.
Awesome. Thanks, Amy. Yeah, I really, I really love those graphs, because you can see just how many tickets we had available and then. How many weren't sold during the summer. So it's pretty, pretty fascinating just to see what we were able to learn with that. Um so moving from vehicle entries and how many folks were accessing the park. Uh we also wanted to talk about just reliability of access. You know, did people get the word? Did they understand how to use the timed entry system? Were um they able to get in at their preferred date and time? And so we did do a survey, and these are the results from that survey. So fifty eight percent of our visitors learned about timed entry in advance on Arches website. So that's pretty awesome. So a lot of people. Stop on the MPS website and they got that message. And we've even um this year changed the website a little bit so that timed entry is screaming at you. The moment that you log in. So there's a really big banner that tells you to click on it to get your ticket. So that's um a change that we made for this year. But we're still really proud that fifty eight percent of folks learned about the system on the website. And then thirty three point six percent learned about timed entry from a variety of other sources, so on the news, social media, word of mouth. Signage, everything else is kind of lumped into this category. And only eight point four percent of visitors learned about timed entry when they arrived at the park. So we really did have. A lot of folks coming with the understanding that they needed that timed entry ticket to get in. And um. By the time they entered the park, ninety one percent of visitors had a timed entry ticket or received some kind of exemption. So that would be. Like a special use permit, a commercial use authorization, and they were able to enter the park. And of everyone who who did enter the park, eighty three percent said that they were able to obtain a timed entry ticket for their preferred date and time. And an average of eighty six, eighty seven percent of visitors arriving to the park. Had their timed entry ticket before arrival. You know, some of them were able to actually secure those reservations in line uh in real time, whenever they were available. So that was really great that we were able to offer that. We're gonna continue to do that this year. Uh but still, about eighty six, eighty seven percent had their timed entry ticket before they ever even came to our entrance booth. And um if you look at the reviews on recreation.gov, um we do have some positive on there, you know, it's a, it's pretty cool. We'll take a look at it in just a second, but um a lot of people actually did reference the smooth entry process, short wait times, believe it or not. And ease of finding parking. Can you click that ahead, Amy? All right, so did visitors have a good experience once they were in the park? We think that they did. So the majority of visitor reviews were positive. Uh if you hop onto rec.gov. About six thousand out of seven thousand reviews were four and five star reviews. So that means that eighty five percent were at least very happy. With the timed entry system and their experience within the park. And you can see that there's a real shift in the sentiment over time. We have surveyed folks about their support of the timed entry system, starting in twenty sixteen and. In twenty uh twenty one, fifty nine percent of visitors supported implementing timed entry. But that increased to eighty five percent in twenty twenty two. And that's way up from the first one in twenty sixteen, where only twenty nine percent of folks supported it. So we can see this real increase each year of support, which I think is is good news. And there's a little clip down below of uh one of the positive. Reviews, so you can read that. Um I think Ben said that he'll attach this to the notes later, so you can check that out at um your leisure. Now, we do understand that with all of these positives that we experienced, right, improved visitor experience, uh smooth processes. We're distributing visitation throughout the day, people are finding parking and and just overall having a better opportunity to explore their park. There were some challenges that we faced and definitely some lessons that we learned as we went throughout the season. And I think the number one thing that most people know and really uh talk about is the wait time at the entrance booth. So depending on the day, sometimes you could just sail right through. But on those busier weekends, holidays, um times before the middle of the summer. Those processing times were increased by about forty eight percent over uh the previous. So we did have longer wait times, and that was. A contributing factor to some frustration, I think, in the community and with some of the timed entry to get older. So what we've done. Is this year, we're making several changes to try to improve that wait time and hopefully streamline things a little bit. So first off, we're gonna allow the purchase of park and annual passes on rec.gov in advance. We did not actually have that option last year. Everyone who went through the the booth actually had to either present their park pass or physically pay for. Uh for the pass or uh an individual, or I I guess I should say the seven day pass. Once they arrived. So we're hoping that if they already purchased their park pass in advance, that might. Uh increase some of the processing times. We're also eliminating the ID requirement. We did have folks show photo ID with every reservation, and we saw little to no fraud. I I think there maybe was one case that I even know of where there might have been something that was a little off, but uh for as many people as we saw. There didn't seem to be a reason to check photo ID, at least at this time. So we're gonna eliminate that for this year. We just finished installing faster internet at the booths, so that should really help. Our credit card machines. Uh during during the season were pretty slow. Some of them took forty five seconds, a minute to actually process the transaction. So we were really struggling there, and uh that was a big part of it. So hopefully, fingers crossed, the faster internet will really help us out. And then we're also beginning an initial planning process for infrastructure improvements. So. Uh potentially, this is all very speculative, but potentially a third lane in a booth or or automated gates where people with a pass could use that pass to get through. Um so we're definitely going through that planning process, but it's in the very preliminary stages. Another thing uh that we know is that um we really wanted to just increase messaging again. You know, even though we had ninety ish percent of folks already knowing about timed entry before they even got here. We still have beefed up our online information a little bit. And I know I haven't been um in Moab this winter. But I've been working with Karen Garthwaite and some of the interpretive rangers, and they're working on getting some signage again on the highway on one ninety one. To try to make that a little bit more visible than it was last year, because I know that the variable. Signboard sometimes was hard to see in the sun, so we're trying to improve that. And then we're also trying to improve uh exemption protocols. So sometimes there are folks who maybe have religious beliefs where they can't access technology. Uh so we're trying to be a little bit more flexible with those visitor groups to allow more people into the park wherever possible. All right, so here's the parameters for the system this year. So all the access will be managed through our main entrance. Folks will still have to utilize recreation.gov. We did extend the season from April first to October thirty first, twenty twenty two. Oh, wait, that was, this should be twenty twenty three. And then the, so we'll we'll fix that before we send it to you. And then uh the window, the time window has also been shortened a little bit. Um to seven to four. And then we have one hour entry windows, and the booking windows are uh still three months in advance. But we've changed the number of next day tickets. Before, we had about seventy five in advance and about twenty five next day. But we wanted folks to have a little bit more opportunity for those those people who just come in and are driving through. Moab kind of spur of the moment. So sixty percent will be in advance and forty percent will be next day. So we're thinking that that might give people a little bit more flexibility. And um then again, we will still have those exemptions from the the timed entry requirement. Permit holders won't have to have one. So folks who are camping, going on very furnished tours, who have special use permits, filming permits. Uh those who have commercial use authorizations, concessioners and park employees and partners will not have to uh get those tickets. And um visitors will be able to return to the park on the same day, but not on subsequent days. All right, so I think uh hopefully I didn't go too long, but we'll wrap this up with just our summary of everything. So. As far as the data goes, timed entry really did successfully distribute visitation throughout the day. It increased access to parking. It improved visitor experience. People were very thrilled with the the program itself once it was implemented. And I know that our CUA holders gave us some really great feedback about things that we could change to try to speed up the line. But besides the line length, I think our CUA holders were relatively happy with the fact that they could access the park during timed entry. And didn't have to worry about just um erratic closures. So I think that was a big success. And our updates for twenty twenty three should improve processing times and provide more off hours access by narrowing that window a little bit. And uh again, by having forty percent the day before, we're hoping to increase ticket purchasing flexibility as well, just for those folks who. Maybe didn't hear about the the system. As we have been saying throughout this whole process, the future success of timed entry or any managed access system, whatever happens when these pilots are complete. Is really dependent on our continued collaboration with you and and the the whole community. So we're so grateful for the relationship that we have. With all of you. We really, really appreciate your feedback and your um willingness just to talk to us and and work with us and make this the best system that can be. So that we can maximize access while protecting the resource and keeping everyone safe. Uh as Amy mentioned at the beginning, the timed entry monitoring report should be available by April. And that's gonna have even more fun charts and graphs and information about when visitors came, how many visitors came, where they traveled to, what sights they saw. What parking they found. Uh it's it's pretty cool. And uh just be on the lookout for that. We'll be sharing it with a lot of our elected officials and you folks. And uh last but not least, we are hoping to start public engagement on our greater visitor use planning. Really, hopefully by early summer. So be on the lookout for that as well. All right, I think that's that's it. Anything else, Amy? All right.
Thank you, guys.
So I've spoken already this spring with several guests. Who I warned about the time entry and planning ahead for that. And they're like, oh, no, we bought seven. We didn't know what day we were going, so we bought one for every day. How are we going to accommodate for those wise folks that did that? And now we have all of those unwittingly. They've now turned someone away. How how are we gonna pivot for that? Because shock and awe of our landscape is pretty fabulous, and we want to share it.
Yeah, great question. And I I haven't heard of anyone buying seven, but I have heard of, you know, people buying for two or three days, um not knowing which day might have the best weather. Which day is gonna fit best with their schedule. Um so we did uh monitor no show rates throughout the season last year, and we made adjustments. Really, after the first week of timed entry, we started making adjustments to oversell tickets based on our no show rates. Uh what we saw was a pretty consistent average. It was much higher than we anticipated. Um and I think it's because of what you just laid out, that people were probably buying way more tickets than they intended to use. So our no show rate average was about thirty to thirty two percent across the season. Um so we um are, we changed our ticket allocations going into this year to build in. Something closer to that with our oversells, anticipating similar things as what we saw last year. Um and then we can adjust accordingly. But but really, after the first couple of months, we didn't need to adjust as much, because again, it's it stayed. Pretty consistent. We tended to have lower no show rates in the morning and higher in the afternoon. So we're able to, you know, flex that way as well. Um but that's really how we how we try to um respond to that is is by overselling and hoping that. That rate stays fairly consistent, and then we kind of hit our targets through overselling tickets. And that overselling happens in the day before allotment. So it basically just becomes a greater number of tickets that are released for those folks that are already in the area.
And how did you track and how will we track moving forward? The satisfaction level of the guests that are turned away, because once they're angry and writing bad things, that's not the solution. We we wanna find a. Solution of how they can visit the park, you know, after six, after four, something, so they can have that opportunity.
Yeah, and that's a really good point, because um recreation.gov really only tracks those who who tried to get a ticket or got a ticket. And likely came into the park. Um and our visitor surveys that we completed this year were only done for visitors that are already in Arches. We don't don't have any surveys of of uh folks in the in the greater Moab area. And so um we don't have great data on. On the folks that maybe returned away and never came back, because they wouldn't be represented in our visitor use survey. And they probably wouldn't be represented in those recreation.gov reviews.
Um I can kind of speak a little to that is um because the staff at Arches at the gate and he and last year during the roundabout. Um would send them and, you know, send them to the MEC. Um and so, I mean, I don't, I didn't keep any data and any any, we didn't track anything with it, but um. Nine times out of ten, we were able to help those people acquire a ticket for the next day. So I know, you know, that, that is one way how the park service is negating it is sending them to the mix so they could get the. You know, the help with getting a ticket. So they're, they're not so angry.
Right. And with every, every vehicle that we did turn away, we gave them a little flyer, just a little handout. That included instructions on how to get a ticket and also let them know that they could come back after five PM. And this year it'll be after. After four, of course, but that seemed to be pretty helpful too. So while we don't know. Their thought processes, and I'm sure many of them were still quite unhappy. We are giving them as much information as we can to try to get them back into the park, either later the same day or the next day.
Other languages might hopefully be something that, once those are returning. I was interpreting a few of those turned away in other languages in Spanish. At least that's mainly the language, but. They were like, why isn't this on the website in a different language? I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah. And we did order of those little, the little flyers, we did order multiple languages this year and I think we ordered. A higher amount than we had. I know we went through Spanish pretty quickly.
And questions? We got a couple more. Sorry, I got just a couple of questions. So I take it that they're not, we talked a little bit in the beginning about being able to purchase if there were available spots, purchase those at the gate. And I take it that's not going to be the case, right? Is there, is there? I guess, is there a system or something moving forward that, that we need to advocate for to make that a possibility? Or is that just something that will probably, I mean, is there reasons that will never happen? You know what I mean?
The chief reason for that is the line processing time. So we could, in theory, do that, but that one vehicle would take up that spot with that ranger in the booth. For five minutes, you know, because you would have to walk the person through. Going through recreation.gov, setting up their account, typing in their credit card number, getting the ticket emailed to them. And then they would have to produce that email and then we would scan it. So it would take a considerable amount of time and we don't think that that's really. An appropriate use of the, the booth and would, would create a lot more problems than it would solve. But we definitely had a lot of folks, particularly in the summer, just come up to the booth. We would say, hey, we have tons of tickets left today. Just scan this QR code, go on to rec.gov, you can park over here in ten minute parking and swing back in just a couple of minutes and we'll get you in. So that's, that's kind of what we've been doing is we've been sending people to the ten minute parking. And then hopefully in the future, as we go through those infrastructure improvement planning processes, we might have a larger space. So that we can have folks, kind of like, you know, when you're in an airport, there's the spot where you're waiting for a flight to come in. It'd be maybe just a slightly enlarged ten minute parking zone where potentially people could stop and make their reservation and come back.
And then, and I think Lacy, we, the other concern we have is sort of putting that out there. And there's maybe an expectation. So you maybe invite more people to get in line with an expectation that they'll just get it at the booth, but then. You know, if we sell out, you know, so it's just. Yeah, I think during the spring seasons when we were selling all available tickets, there's just not as much opportunity for folks to get that last minute ticket at the booth. As well. In the summer, like Kate said, it gets, there's a lot more opportunity in July and August. And we're looking at how we might. Make some system tweaks to try to accommodate more folks unaware at that time when we know we have availability.
Cool. And then that resuming to my other question, in the spring, there were a lot of days that you guys did sell out. And so that adjustment of the sixty and forty percent, do you see that potentially? Are you overselling enough that that doesn't discourage visitation to the area in general if they don't get a ticket? Like, I guess maybe the education around that there are forty percent of these tickets available. Because I can see that really dragging those numbers down.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because we, our visitor surveys show us that. What did, what it was the number today? Forty to forty five percent of our visitors are planning their trip to the area two to six months in advance or more. But what we, we didn't see last year and what we haven't seen so far this year is that we're not seeing them book up that far in advance. In fact, I just pulled the numbers for April. The first week of April, we've sold eighty to ninety percent of available tickets. And then beyond that, you're going down fifty percent into May, you're looking at thirty to forty percent. So even though it seems like people are planning their trip here. Well in advance, maybe they're not always booking that ticket when they plan their trip. At least that's the way it looked last year and it's starting to look this year.
Okay. And then, and then very last tour operators, they usually like to book, you know. Well in advance of the three months. Have we done any, have we, has everybody talked about addressing tour operators? I guess they have a CUA though.
That because they use a CUA.
And they can always use that. Okay, never mind. Scratch that. All right. That's it. Of all my questions. You have a local discount and a fast lane for us to be able to go in. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Let's go everybody home.
So I make a motion.
We've got two other things.
Really important information we want to hear.
I make a motion that we move the Go West Summit report from Melissa to next one.
We've also talked with the admin and they've wanted us to postpone the grant.
I also make the move that we postpone, remove the grant recommendation report to next one.
Got a couple of seconds.
And just please, if you guys, everybody can send me a little. Feedback from, for the billboard, that would be fantastic because I think next week I have a little chat with. So you guys give me an, an input that would be fantastic. Send me an email. I'm happy to see what.
Were there any, sorry, we just want to make sure we record. Were there any opposed votes for the postpone or is everybody in favor?
Agenda emails to me, anything about the format, accessing documents, anything like that.
Melissa, when do you want to have that?
This week.
This week.
The only other thing I want to just make some comment is there is the. Ribbon cutting at the MEC Thursday for the. For the.
Three PM?
Ten AM.
I heard that.
Thursday, ten AM ribbon cutting at the MEC.
I've been noticing how all those lovely trucks are parking in the new RV parking only section.